4.01, our public comment session. And during public comments, any citizen of Kirkwood School District may make a statement or address the board concerning issues pertaining to Kirkwood School District. The period of time set aside shall not exceed thirty minutes. Any non-board member wishing to speak must register their desire to do so. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Speakers are not to address the board concerning specific personnel issues. Board members will not directly respond to a speaker during the meeting. And the board establishes a uniform time limit of three minutes for each speaker. And we have one speaker tonight, Jennifer Ono.
And it's on? Okay, great. Lean close, got it. Okay. I'm looking at the timer. Perfect, great. Good evening. My name is Jenny Ono. I work at Westchester Elementary School, serve on the Executive Board of KNEA, and am a proud Kirkwood parent and community member. I'm here this evening to thank the administrative team and the board for their continued support of diversity, equity, and inclusion, Infinity Groups, and the Kirkwood Teachers of Color Mentorship Program. My experience with Kirkwood's support of diversity, equity, and inclusion and access began after my children and I moved to Kirkwood from Hawaii in 2013. After being hired as a full-time teacher, I attended the February 2014 Equity PD Day. Before that, as a parent of biracial children, I was concerned about moving to a new state and district that was not as racially diverse as where we came from, and what that would mean for a predominantly white school district. On that February Equity PD Day, I was challenged to learn more and be open. I was relieved to see so many colleagues engaged in diversity work, and what I learned from that PD Day was that my children would be taken care of by teachers who were working on themselves to create safe spaces for all children. I also learned that my experiences weren't the same as others, and I needed to listen and challenge myself in this new community. My children had good experiences in Kirkwood Schools during their eight and ten years. They both had teachers who were black and teachers in other marginalized groups who understood and empathized with their experiences. Teachers reached out to them to ensure their happiness and success and cared for them. However, through their time in Kirkwood Schools, it wasn't until high school that they found the only teacher who looked like them, the Chinese teacher. Our diversity work is essential for those of us teaching in the classroom and those responsible for hiring a wide range of teachers of color. Since my children have graduated, three to four teachers across the district now look like my children, so thank you for that. I envision a future for our Kirkwood community that includes many teachers who reflect the world our children will live and work in. Our world continues to become increasingly ethnically diverse, and our children should be prepared for that world by educators who support and believe that diversity is our strength, as well as educators who represent the world outside our Kirkwood School walls. We are a district of pioneers. Pioneers push boundaries and promote bigger thinking. Pioneers champion change and growth, and when we embrace our mission and values, especially diversity, equity, inclusion, and access, we are being the pioneers our children need. Thank you.
Thank you. Point 402, approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda for the May 19th, 2025 meeting as presented. So moved Andrews.
Second, Kathy.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Section 5.01, consent agenda approval. I need a motion to approve the presented consent agenda items 5.02 through 5.19. So moved Andrews.
Second, Hepburn.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. New business. 7.01, financial statements for April 2025. I need a motion to approve the financial statements for April 2025 as presented.
So moved Kathy.
Second, Andrews. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, sorry. We were on a roll, baby.
Thank you, and good evening. Our revenues in April, operating revenues, were 3.6 million, and that consists of about 600,000 in current taxes, 600,000 in Prop C revenue, 869,000 in state assessed utility revenue, and then state revenue was 1.1 million. Our collection rate was 85.2% through the month of April, and that compares to 84% last year. We budget for 97%. We should be close to that. We're expecting a large payment this month, which should put us right at that amount. On operating expenditures for April was 7.2 million. Most of that is salaries and benefits. Finally, in our self-funded insurance accounts, as you know, we've been watching this pretty closely really for the last few years, but more importantly this year, because claims have exceeded the revenues, the premiums that go into that account. So the past two months, the reverse has happened. So we're happy to see that. We hope that continues. But in the month of March and April, we've added about 400,000 in total to the self-funded reserves. So that's positive.
We'll open it to discussion, Mr. Kathy, Ms. Andrews. Ms. Hepburn. Ms. Neiman?
No.
I got nothing. All those in favor? Raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Excellent. Motion passes. Now we have new business, 7.02, resolution for paid parental leave for support staff. I need a motion to approve the Board of Education resolution regarding paid parental leave for all regular, full-time Kirkwood School District employees not included in the KSD/KNEA collective bargaining agreement for the 2025-2026 school year as presented. We'll hear from Dr. Fields. Oh. So moved Hepburn. Second, Neiman.
Good evening, Board of Education, community, and colleagues. I said before you, as it relates to the resolution for paid parental leave, it was a pleasure working with the collective bargaining unit, and we did a great job of creating what we believe is a paid parental leave for certified staff. Having said that, we do have fantastic staff that consist of both certified as well as support staff, and so the resolution that you see in front of you would make it available for not only certified staff, but support staff as well. Hearing from our support staff, they work just as hard as all other staff, and we believe this was something that will continue to help us both in the retention area as well as with climate and culture.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Fields, just wanted to point out, in an email exchange that we had a little bit earlier today, you were helpful in providing additional context as to the estimates for what impact this would have. I think for me, it wasn't clear from some of the information what those estimates might be and how they might impact the budget. So just want to point out that you provided some additional detail that I thought was really helpful, and I just want to make sure the community is aware that there has been a very thoughtful approach to making sure we're not only offering the paid parental leave to KNEA members, but also to non-KNEA members as well. So thanks for that additional information.
Thank you, and I appreciate the question.
Ms. Hepburn? Ms. Andrews? Mr. Kathy? Ms. Andrews?
This will be something that we review, just like the other parental leave, and to ensure that we can continue financial stability with this.
Absolutely. Ms. Andrews, given the fact that as a data person, and many of us love having data to make informed decisions, absent of data, we have to look at things in a more conservative manner, and so we will review, as is, the CBA is annual. We will look at that, and we will also have hopefully some artifact data to let us know how we can make better estimates.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fields.
Thank you.
For all your work on this. And I just want to thank you for noting that all the staff, whether it's certified or not, this is something that's important to all of them. So, thank you.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent Board Reports, Class Size Report, 2025-2026.
Good evening again, Board of Education, community, and colleagues. Madam President Motika, I heard you say a few times, we're on a roll, and I don't want to mess up the roll, and so with this being the update, I am going to provide only the information that has changed as it pertains to the last meeting up into this one. And so the first slide that I will go to is slide number nine. Slide number nine does provide some helpful information as it relates to the bolded areas. Essentially, the district is currently six students away from collapsing four additional elementary classroom sections, and six students away from adding three additional elementary classroom sections. If both of these scenarios occurred, the district would have a reduction of five elementary classroom sections when compared to the 24-25 school year class size report. In addition to that, I will go through each of the subsequent slides, and I must make note, when we are in April, I typically just provide, almost like the too early to determine enrollment projections as it relates to staffing. Dr. Bailey does a great job with the enrollment piece, but the kindergarten mid-series number is what is presented. However, this point moving forward, I want to make sure you are also aware of the actual enrollment per infinite campus as of May the 13th. And so all of the information that is here, you will see the actual kindergarten enrollment is 56, but the mid-series says 75. All other information is the same from the last time I reported, that being first grade, 70 students, 76 for second grade, 102 for third, 112 for fourth, and 104 for fifth at Kaiser. As we move on to North Glendale, 93 kindergarteners is what we have for Dr. Coffrin's mid-series projections. However, the actual enrollment per infinite campus on May the 13th is 75, followed by 84 actual for first grade, 79, 101, 99, and 103. As we move on to Robinson Elementary School, the mid-series shows 62 projected for kindergarten at Robinson. The actual kindergarten enrollment is 44, followed by 67 in first, 74, 90 in third, 77 in fourth, and 73 in fifth grade. As we proceed to Tillman, 63 is the Coffrin mid-series report projections. We have an actual kindergarten enrollment as of May the 13th in infinite campus, 52, followed by 61 in first grade, 78, 80, 79 in fourth, and 86 in fifth grade. For Westchester, we have 75 for the actual Dr. Coffrin's mid-series projections as of May the 13th, again in infinite campus. We have 49, followed by 75, 110, 87, 93 in fourth, and 125th grade at Westchester. This next slide, slide number 15, shows the updated elementary sections by school and by grade. You see the 126, and this time last year, you would have seen the 130, so we are at four less sections this time of year as opposed to last year. This information for slide 16 is pretty helpful because it provides you not only the actual average class sizes by the actual school, as well as the actual grade level, but the notes section in the last column to the right provides the additional context that I was referring to. For instance, at Kaiser, you will see minus two students away from collapsing a section in third grade. That is essentially if we were to lose two additional students from enrollment at third grade, we would need to collapse a section. As is the case before I proceed, when I say collapse, that is only the case until the July board meeting. After the July board meeting, we have adopted a process where we will not collapse a section irrespective of what happens with enrollment, but we could in fact add a section. You will see the subsequent information for North Glendale, Robinson, Tillman, as well as Westchester. As we move to slide number 17, you'll see the updated elementary students, and again, the mid-series for Coffrin is what we have for kindergarten. We'll do that probably one more time, and starting in June, we should have a more accurate depiction as it relates to our actual kindergarten. And slide number 18 is a new slide, because as we take a closer look at kindergarten sections, you will have in the first column, the actual students at the respective elementary schools, followed by the actual kindergarten number, the mid-series for Coffrin, the difference between the mid-series and the projected, and then the percentage difference. For secondary, we do have our numbers for sixth, seventh, and eighth for both Nifer and North Kirkwood Middle, followed by the flagship being the high school, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, as well as the total. At this time, I'll yield over to Dr. Ulrich to see if he wanted to add or mention anything before I turn it back over to you, Madam President Motika, for any additional questions.
Mr. Kathy?
Given the trends with Coffrin, and we talked about the OnDeck program last year, is that in place still? And just given where things are going, it doesn't look like they'd need to be used if they were, but I was just curious on that program itself.
So the, great question. As it relates to the OnDeck, that was a pilot for this current year. It is not currently in place for next year. There was a process created where those folks that were on one-year-only contracts had a chance to interview for the various positions that we did have open. From there, we essentially don't see the need as it pertains to right now. However, if we need to revisit that, we certainly will.
Okay. And then, I know you've got this down to a science with kindergarten enrollment at this point in the year. Are you feeling like we're kind of on track with years past, give or take? Like, we're kind of tracking where we have, or is there anything we just need to be aware of that we're either ahead of schedule or significant behind?
Yes.
Because the information is critical to you to be able to do your job, so.
Absolutely. And so I get nervous in April and May every year, quite honestly. But as it pertains to June, we typically have a little bit more data, and for some reason, between May and June, we do see an uptick in terms of registration. I won't put the particular school on the spot, but historically, one school has been lower, they're actually higher this year, and then another school that has been relatively higher is actually lower. And so I think we'll be in a better position to make some additional projections or analysis as it relates to next month. But for right now, I'm not celebrating yet. We're still knocking on doors, so to speak, at the elementary level, making sure we're getting people registered. But if the numbers stay as they are for next month, then it'll be different conversations.
But what I'm hearing is we're not critically behind schedule in terms of like, yeah?
No, not critically, not at this time.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Ms. Andrews?
Hey, Dr. Fields, thanks again for all your work on this. At the key volunteer meeting, we had heard from some parents from North Glendale in particular about a section, third grade. It's a third grade going into fourth grade. So I had done some looking into that and went back to last year's June 24th, 2024 slide, and they had the same number of kids that they have this year. So they had 99 kids last year. Sorry, I'm pulling it up. And so, how many sections? It seems like they had fives or four sections, four or five, I guess five sections that year, this year. And now we're going to be collapsing a section possibly, and it's the same number of kids. And so I just want to kind of understand that.
So will you, just to be clear, are you saying last year was third grade or this year's third grade?
So, I know. I know. This year is third grade. They're moving to fourth grade next year.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
Oh, no, you're.
I know, it's like, it gets.
Yeah, so certainly understand that as I'm looking at slide 11 and slide 16, which in this particular instance, we're looking at the third grade being at 101, and if we stay exactly where we are at 101.
Oh, wait, I think, are you looking at, sorry, you're looking at third, you're looking at rising third graders. We're looking at rising fourth. Sorry, Dr. Fields.
No, you're fine. So this particular slide, for slide 16, we look at that in terms of ideally, we wouldn't have to collapse a section. I think it does vary. However, collapsing a section would be based upon, if that 99 stays at 99, they will be fine, but if it goes up, that's the piece where we might have to add a section. Now, if it's at 101, which is what I was looking at as an example for the current third grade, we would stay where we are with five sections. It's just if we lose two additional students through enrollment, it would go underneath that 100 threshold, and in that particular instance, we would have to collapse a section. Ideally, that wouldn't happen till after July, because if it's after July, we don't have to collapse.
Okay, so then I think that there might be confusion. I don't know if Lisa or someone else, I think that the parents were thinking that there was going to be a collapse, and you needed two more kids to expand this section.
For current fourth grade, we do. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I didn't know if I was allowed to talk at a turn, but so I think that the issue here is that for the fourth graders, this is for 2025-2026 school year.
Yeah.
So the fourth graders currently, they're at 99, and that's where we see them go from five sections to four sections. You can't see that change in this particular slide, but they've gone from 101 students down to 99 students. It just happens to be the numbers of the same year, even though it's different school years. Yeah. But that's the, that's the question, yes. They've lost two students, and so they're not getting a fifth section, which they currently have this year. And Jean Marie, are you asking?
But they didn't lose two students, because I'm at, looking, I have June 24th of 2024 data pulled up, and it says I would be looking at their third grade section for that year because they were in third grade and they had 99 students.
I have to take a look at it.
It's fine. Okay.
Yeah, I know that, I'm not sure if it was North Glendale. I know that there was a particular school where they moved above the threshold. I'm going to say Westchester for sure, and there may have been one more. They moved above the threshold after a particular time, which would have been July, and then they lost a few students. And so what it looked like was they were able to have more sections, but that decrease changed after the July board meeting. I'm not saying that's the case with North Glendale. I need to pull up the data to look at it, but you know me in terms of a stickler for parameters that we have in place, something had to have happened in order for it to be under 100 and still have five sections as opposed to four.
Yeah, okay. So if you don't mind, just because it's hard to have those conversations, and I was looking at the data, and I'm like, oh, that's 99, and they're at 99. So if you don't mind.
I work with Steph, I work with Steph Lempert and be in touch with her to learn a little bit more about it, and certainly if you or Ms. Neiman has some, Ms. Neiman, sorry, has some information that you can send me, that'd be helpful, but I don't mind reaching out and having conversations with Steph.
Okay, great. And then the other thing that I would just say is, I would just make another attempt to push us in the direction of, right now, currently, we base our class sizes on numbers, and I get that, and I get from a, you know, fiscally responsible aspect, I, you know, think that that's, you know, where we've been. But I would just ask if there are other factors that we can kind of add into that that make it a little bit more dynamic and make it more able to meet the needs of all of our students and all of our staff, and so.
Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Hepburn?
Yeah, I'm going to build on a little bit of what Ms. Motika was, or I'm sorry, Ms. Andrews was speaking to. So I definitely look at part of my role here, a couple of my big responsibilities are, you know, being responsible to my community and representing their priorities and values, and then also making sure that we are following the strategic plan and following our stated mission and priority goals. So with those in mind, I know we have some priority goals around equity. I know that that's something that our community has repeatedly spoken to as very important. And, you know, over the past three years, that I've been kind of paying attention to this conversation, so I've consistently seen a lot of these conversations pop up. So I also was at that key volunteer meeting, and one of the things that these parents were speaking to was the needs of this particular class due to, you know, SEL challenges. I know that in past years, we've had some conversations that came up with academic benchmarks, some different pieces like that. So when I think about that in the context of equity, and just to like pull the classic example of you have three people trying to look over the fence at the ballgame, right? You don't give them all the same box, you give them the box that they need to be able to see the game. And so with that in mind, and looking at this and our process and everything, you know, I know at one time or another, almost all of the board members have spoken to a desire to look at our class size policies and how we can, you know, look at that, and I think, I fully realize that that kind of deep dive is going to take time. So realistically, that's something that's, you know, whether that's tied to our strategic plan, our next strategic plan, or it's something that happens independently, that's a year or possibly two out. So, you know, when I think about this past year, this administration made a really great impact with tweaking the SOP, right? When you changed what triggered adding a section, changed not collapsing sections after July, like those were such powerful impactful changes, and it really just makes me wonder if there might be more we can do in that arena and have kind of that positive impact. And so, you know, I don't know if that means we start out at KSD class guidelines and we don't collapse sections until we're below DESI recommended class sizes. I don't know if we formalize a process where building administrators can petition for something that falls within that range for a particular class, you know, specific to student data. You know, and I'm just generating ideas as examples of just kind of the type of flexible thinking that I think may be beneficial to our school community. You know, and I do want to say that I recognize how important some sort of standardized process is, right? I'm not advocating for the Wild West and chaos and like throwing money and having class sizes that are 10 kids and class sizes that are 80 kids, you know? But, you know, even if you look at these numbers, so, you know, speaking of the fourth grade class at North Glendale, like those fourth grade classes have 25 students, but the fourth grade classes at Robinson and Tillman have 19 or 20 students. So even within our current standardized process, there's already variance. So I guess what I'm just asking is, if we accept that variance is just going to be like part of the natural state of things, is there a way to kind of wield those variances a little bit more and, you know, tweak our SOP for the next one or two years until we can do a deeper dive to maybe address some of these conversations that come up? And so I guess it's more of a comment, or it's a question about what more can we do? You know, and I also want to clarify that, I'm just really passionate about this. I fully respect the great work that this administrative team has done, and, I mean, if I've learned anything this past year on the board, is that, you know, people see this much of the iceberg of like how much goes into every tiny decision and the ripples of the things that it impacts. And so with full respect for that process, I do personally feel really passionate that this seems like an area that we could probably tweak and make a really big impact for our, some of our school communities and families and students and teachers. And so that's just, you know, something I want to speak to on the earlier part of this process as we're in May, and just throw that out there for consideration.
Absolutely, and not just to you, Ms. Hepburn, I appreciate. Absolutely, and not just to you, Ms. Hepburn, I appreciate it. I, I also appreciate the perspective as it pertains to the board's desire to look at some of these things. I think it's a, an opportunity certainly to collaborate. Just as a reminder, this particular report in its infancy was more so just to look at staffing. And you can't look at elementary staffing without looking at class sizes and seeing how many teachers we need. I respect the, the great work that some of my colleagues are engaged in. Not only with Dr. Ulrich, who credit to Dr. Ulrich for shifting the SOP, but also with Dr. Baylen, Dr. Grana in terms of class sizing, the, the class sizes, the impact, et cetera. So I think it's an opportunity for collaboration. And if, you know, with the superintendent's direction, if that decision is made to shift class sizes or what have you, just be reinforced that the staffing for those class sizes will be something that we're looking at. But again, that's a lengthier conversation with multiple individuals, not just myself.
Ms. Neiman?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate Ms. Hepburn and Ms. Andrews' comments and input. I would also double down on that concept of reevaluating the class size criteria to look at more than just number of students. Because of course, as we know, class sizes very much impact the student's ability to learn and to have an effective classroom setting. So that's, that's very important. What I would really encourage is us to move fast. So move faster than we've been. If we've been talking about this for several years, I would hope this is something we could prioritize and work together to move forward in a place where, in a kind of a timing that best impacts our students. I'm curious if any work that's been done to date as these changes have happened in kind of the procedures for developing class sizes and numbers of sections, if we've looked at any other factors or looked to other districts in terms of what they do to determine appropriate class sizes?
Glad you asked. As the person, I went through a very comprehensive class size analysis at the direction of Dr. Ulrich. I don't have the particular date and month for the board meeting, but I'll make sure you get that either from Dr. Ulrich or from Laura. Yes, there's a, an analysis that looks at not only our comparison districts, not only DESI, but what would happen both from a budgetary standpoint as well as from a space standpoint in the various buildings if in fact we adjust the class sizes. So that report does exist. Again, the data is based off of data at that time. And again, we can certainly look at that, but that work has been plowed, as Dr. Ulrich would say.
Yeah, it's interesting to me that, of course, the impact to the budget is something that we'd consider and, you know, would be important for us when thinking about class sizes. But we did note, at least for now, it looks, it appears as if across the district, there would be a net reduction if all stayed the same over the next couple of months. There'd be a reduction in, of the number of educators by five. So I would imagine that that might be something to Ms. Hepburn's point of, you know, what variables do we look at to determine what's right district-wide and in the individual situation? So kind of at a macro level and then really at a micro level and evaluate then. And, and maybe a more robust process for how we do those evaluations could be beneficial.
I agree. Thank you for that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fields, for bringing all of this to us and to all my fellow board members for, again, raising the concern and the question. And I think that one of the things going forward that might be worth considering is since we do have essentially extra teachers, if we're talking that we might have to collapse five sections, ways that we could not collapse all of those.
I also just want to go back to an email on Ju- July, January, or December 20th. I know, one of the months, one of the 12. You know, December 20th, where we were told that we needed to reduce our staff by nine staff through attrition. And so I, I just, I get that it would be something to, like, yeah, you know, not get rid of these staff. But I'll be honest with you, I also have that email in mind where it's like, yeah, I want to make, look at class sizes, but we have an email that tells us that we need to be reducing our staff through attrition. And so I am not comfortable just all of a sudden. I feel very conflicted on, on kind of like just pulling that, that, making that decision. Because, I mean.
And I just do, I wanna be clear, as when we say cut staff, we don't have to cut staff right now. Like, that's something that our team with finance and HR, we've been trying to project as much as we can project. So no one is being let go on anything. So I do wanna make sure we're clear there.
I know. I am sorry that I, again, it was just, as a board member, we did receive. So I, I appreciate you correcting my, my wording on that so that people don't panic that they're getting cut. It wasn't being cut, but through, you know, retirement and that kind of thing. But with that being said, you know, it's kind of.
Understood.
Mr. Caffey?
Did you wanna finish your comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I just, I see this as, you know, we're gonna talk budget here in a minute. I think we're in a, I've talked to, I think, everybody about this point that I feel we're in a, a new environment which, you know, is created by this now that we, the two-year trend from the Coffrin data, where we see enrollment going down. And I think just speaking to the board members, we, we need to really wrap our heads around what that environment looks like now. Because I don't wanna take, just, I think it's great to kick ideas around, right? But what it would look like if we did something now is to your point, we're not cutting anybody, but it would pivot us into a situation where we need to go out and recruit and then hire new teachers to fill those positions, right? Like, that's what it would actually look like this year. Like, we would have to go find new teachers to the five sections that are now being, not pulled forward into next year.
That and/or, and this is nervous, but if we didn't make the kindergarten sections, then those folks would, so it's all tied in. But to your point, yes, it's a complicated amount.
Yeah, I, I, I'm all for it and I think there's an appetite to definitely keep looking at this. But I think there's just, this is my plug for like a larger conversation about as we start looking at operating reserves and what we're gonna hear more about tonight. Like, really coming up with kind of a vision that we have as a seven-member board about what we, we wanna do there. We're not incredibly, I'll hit a few of my points I was gonna say later. We're in incredibly strong position financially. And, but we just need to see in this new environment where enrollment is going down, how do we, how do we view that and reprioritize things? So I'm rambling. I'll be quiet.
Yes, Ms. Hepburn?
I'm sorry. I'm gonna be one of the other people saying. I just wanna be clear for our community's sake that when we talk about the attrition, I always get nervous because I don't wanna give the wrong, you know, to Mr. Caffey's point, we are in a strong position. And what we talk about with these nine positions, that's over the course of the next, I believe it's three years, four years? Four years. So we're looking at nine positions over four years. We're not, I don't think there's a strong concern that that's not going to be able to happen naturally. And so I just wanna make sure that we're not, you know, raising alarm that doesn't need to be alarm. And, and you know, when I'm looking at these things and not collapsing sections, it's, you know, if North Glendale, if these rising fourth graders have five sections this year, can we carry those five sections forward? That kind of thing. Not major changes. Are there tweaks to be made? But I just, again, wanna be clear, four years, nine positions, it's not like we're kicking people out right and left. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just wanna add as well, I think it is important, I think Mr. Caffey made a really good point of the ripple impacts of these types of decisions and that they can't be made in a one-off way. We really have to be thoughtful about what is the right process and what's the right approach for us to make these decisions so that we have the right framework in place rather than, gosh, this looks like it's a lot of students in this section for this year. Let's add more. It has to be a really thoughtful process, but we have to make sure that that process works across the board. So, you know, if it's not, if we see, continue to see situations in which it's not working for this and it's not reflecting appropriately, we're intending for that, then we have to change the policy and the process. So I think that's what I'm advocating for is just a more thoughtful look at that, intentional look at that process. Thank you.
I would say that yes, you know, the nine sections, it's over three years. But Mr. Rome's budget is built on us following the class size guidelines, correct? Yes. And so if we don't follow the class size guidelines, it, it impacts Mr. Rome's budget and changes his entire budget. And so.
This has been a very good discussion. I, I think to, to wrap up what I was trying to say before everyone jumped in again. No, that's, it's good, is just you all, you all have a much better sense of what adding a section here or there or not collapsing a section here or there, what that means in the whole big picture. And so since there are some concerns from North Glendale and Westchester this year, other years, it's been other schools and other concerns. You know, I just, it, I'd love to know some possible ideas that won't throw everything out of whack. And just, you know, again, you guys are the experts here and I for one rely on that. And so if, if you come back and say, here's something we could do this year, I would love to hear it. And I think the board is open to hearing possibilities. You know, this isn't a directive to say, we've gotta change this now. It's just, let's look at it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For everything you do. Okay, thank you, Dr. Ulrich. Anything else on this?
Can we, the, what's the takeaway from this? If we could summarize it?
So the, the takeaway that I'm hearing is, is that this Board of Education, to have an impact on the 25, 26 school year, is looking for maybe any, any, any recommendations that would be, A, I'm gonna always say this, gonna look at Mike Rome and make eye contact when I say, that would have to be fiscally responsible. That would be, is there any, is there any impact, like, again, like a year ago, it was mentioned like a year ago in a change in SOP. And if there is, then that would be something that I would bring forward to this board. And if there's not, I would say to this board, there's not. That's the takeaway I was taking, Mr. Caffey.
I, I, I'm all for ideas. I don't know that we have, like, there's just so much more information that I would wanna see, like, a lot. Like, I wanna, like, ultra emphasize that. Do, do you feel confident? So let's be honest, there's a time constraint here, right? Like, do you feel confident that, well, I guess my question would be that that's taken into account? Like, there, there would need to be a lot of financial information that would need to be reviewed by the board. And again, to impact the 25, 26 school year. I don't wanna throw cold water on this thing. I'm, I'm all for, I'm just worried about the timing and, and us making a decision as a board. So that, that's where my hesitation comes.
Well, and if, if I may, Ms. Motica, what I would also say, Mr. Caffey, is we also have a transition in leadership in this district going on as well. And so, and so I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm always mindful of that because I would want, I would have wanted the person who I followed to, to be mindful of that as well. What I can tell you is, that's why I was very clear to say, if there's not a pathway to do it exactly the way that you're describing, I'll say to you that there's not a pathway. But I can't say that with 100% confidence because I haven't met with this group of professionals that I rely on and trust. And we'll begin that process. My guess is there's wheels spinning already back here. And, and, and we will have that conversation. And that conversation may be very short. And, and I may put something in the board update that says, guys, we just can't do this. It's, it's May 19th, 20, 21st, 23rd, we just can't do this. Or if I believe there's a pathway, I would bring that to the board for the board's, for the board's review.
Yeah, and just to be clear, like, one, and so I'm understanding that, that can we do this? The can we do is, are we in the position where we would just say at no point further, we're gonna collapse any sections? Like, is that what we're seeking? Is that the idea?
I mean, if I, if you, if you're asking me what I am asking of the, of the team, which I, I mean, I will tell you, I'm, I'm thrilled just to hear the idea that you guys will meet and brainstorm a little bit. Do you know what I mean? I, I think last year, I mean, I, it was midsummer. I don't know. It wasn't, it was another situation last year when it was as simple as, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna wait till all, you know, 50% of the sections are above guidelines. But, you know, is there some low-hanging fruit here where the couple classes that maybe have some extra needs and we can give them a more equitable access to a positive academic experience? You know, is there something there, especially when, you know, if we're looking in terms of the teachers do already exist? You know what I mean? I, I, I don't know what it is. So I, I'm not asking for you to solve the whole class size thing. And, and I will fully respect it if your email says, hey, we looked at this and like, there's no way to do this without our budget taking, you know, a, a hit that we can't take. I'm wondering, is there something here or tweak like we did last year that moves us just one more step forward? You know, and, and if it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist and I will fully accept that. Yeah. So that's, if that answers your question, Mr. Caffey, like, I, I'm not.
Yeah, I, I, I get you. And again, I don't want to undermine this. But I would, the only thing I would say, and then I promise I'll be quiet, is like, I, I, I feel strongly, as I've expressed to a lot of board members, that like, I really think we need to make sure we, we all are on the same page or have a vision with this new environment that we're operating in, which is decreasing enrollment and what that means to everything that Mr. Rome is about to talk to us about. So I think that's a, that's a big piece of this as well. And I would just ask, and I have trust in everybody that we'd work with on that, that that's gotta be a discussion with this as well, if that makes sense. So.
I would just say that we are slated to approve the budget and the budget is based on following the current class size guidelines. And so I, you know, I'm asking, do you, you know, we're hearing the preliminary budget tonight, right? And so I guess if this change is gonna be made, then would we have another preliminary budget hearing and then another type of meeting, you know?
Well, the one thing, and again, I, whenever I talk about the budget, I always make eye contact with Mike, is just as a reminder that the budget, that is, the preliminary budget that is being given to the board, obviously, Mike works that independently and the commitment was, it was actually for flat staffing this year. And so at this point, you know, with the attrition that we saw, if you recall, it was flat staffing this year, then three the next fiscal year, and then so on for two more fiscal years. So at this, at this point, that, that we would take that into a consideration or anything that we may or may not bring, bring back. And again, there's, there's no easy fixes. I really appreciate that. Is there something, is there a, a little tweak? I'm not even gonna mention anything out loud because then that becomes a thing that we're doing. Certainly I've learned that as a superintendent. Is, but what I can say is we have a group of folks here, the same group that I went to last year and, and said, hey, are there, what, what can we do here? And, and we were able to come up with something that, that did impact it. The, the one thing that I wanna say before we move, we move away too, too much of this is, I want you to really take a look at that slide that is up there right now. And I want you to think about the class sizes that we're able to offer for our, for our teachers and for our, for our families and for our kids. And so I, I, I don't want that to be lost in the conversation as we continue and strive. And this board demands that we get better and better. The demands of this board to get better and better. Guys, I know what our class size guidelines are. But when you see where we are below those guidelines, because of the commitment that this board has made in terms of the standard operating procedures of when we add another section, guys, I, I would put that up against any school district in this state in terms of the class sizes that we have for, for, for our kids. And so we will continue to be pushed by this board because we all are committed to giving really the best environment for our teachers and, and for our kids every single day. And as I tell people, if you give us something to solve, my money's on these folks right here, right? And so, again, my commitment, Mr. Caffey, is, is we'll take a look, start even just some brief preliminary conversations. And if that is just not anything we can get momentum on, I will tell this board specifically, we cannot get momentum on that. The other thing I will also say is, as we are moving into really these. really, these last five or six weeks as me as the superintendent, I do think it's also appropriate to say to this board, I will also consult with Dr. Rumpus. And, because ultimately, the, the budget that, that he is going to inherit is the budget you're going to begin to hear about tonight in detail from Mr. Romei. And, and ultimately, that's the budget that he will be interacting with the board and with the district on. And so, that will also absolutely have to be a step as well. So, my commitment to you is, if there's a pathway, I'll describe that pathway. It will be done with, with the full, you know, with the full consent and informing of our new superintendent. And all the way over, I'm leaving open that gap to say, or that to say, we just aren't going to be able to make the impact. And as you have said, and as we are going to hear, the district is in a very strong financial position. Again, thanks to the work of Mr. Romei and working with this board, that will give this board the flexibility to, you've heard, I've heard mention of the strategic plan already, right? This next year, you're going to be working on that strategic plan. There's going to be flexibility for this board to make an impact on kids, really PK through 12. And, and I'm excited to see what you guys do.
Ms. Mottika, can we also then look at, you know, we've heard, we saw that our principals, our middle school and our high school principals ask for some staffing. And so, they have some staffing needs due to class sizes and that kind of thing, where, you know, parents aren't really aware of that kind of thing. So, if we could, we rely more on our principals for that kind of feedback? If we, they could include those, those staffing changes too? Great, thanks.
Just one small thing. October, October the 30th, 2023 was the elementary class size guidelines report. Ms. Naima just emailed you that particular presentation, so you'll have it. So the board was asking, where do we at least start? There's a lot of rich data there that I'm pretty sure we'll be looking at as well.
Thank you very much. As has been advertised, 8.02 preliminary budget.
Good evening again. Let me get this slide up. Yeah, so as, as advertised, this is the preliminary budget. So we will discuss it tonight, a couple funds, operating in debt service. But certainly, you can ask me questions about any other funds that you may have. We'll discuss this tonight. We'll discuss it again on June 2nd. That's the work session. And then we have to bring a final budget for approval on June 23rd. So as mentioned, I'll talk about the operating and debt service funds. The rest of the funds we'll cover on June 2nd. But again, if you have any questions about any of the, the other funds, just please ask. Do want to thank Scott Harmon and Shannon Orlop in the Finance Department for all their help with putting this budget together. They help me each and every year. They also serve on our Budget and Finance Committee. I want to thank that committee as well. As you see, they provide guidance with putting together the budget and with the projections and with just the performance, sustainability, all those things. They also provide a community perspective. So, I want to thank them for their time and their expertise and their help each and every year. So first, we'll discuss the operating revenue budget. The, the big thing that I want to point out first is our state adequacy target. That's part of the state formula. That's the main part of the state formula. And back in February, Governor Quixote's State of Address, he recommended or proposed that we would not increase the SAT to keep it flat at 6,760 students. But just over a week ago, on, on May 9th, the state legislature approved increasing it to $7,145 per student. So that's a pretty significant increase. That number comes from DESI. So it's, it's a calculation that DESI uses to determine what schools need. So that first started as their recommendation. And as I had mentioned, it was, is passed by the state legislature. So, now the governor has a few options. He can sign the bill. He could veto it. And that would then send it back to the state legislature. They could either veto it, or they could override it. And if there's no override, then, then they would have to call a special such and to work on the budget again. And then finally, the governor could sign the bill and then withhold funds during the fiscal year if the state runs into any kind of financial trouble. So that's, that's the third option. But based on what we have right now at this point, and the indication that it's likely going to be signed, we're using $7,145 per student in the formula. And so just to show what that difference, oops. Let's see, sorry. So just to show what that difference is and how it impacts the budget, you see that first column of numbers shows the revenue projections with the 6,760 SAT. The next column is the new number, 7,145 SAT. And so that difference is about $2.3 million. That increases next year's budget. And so originally, we were expecting $96 million in total operating revenue. That's an increase of about $2 million or 2%. That's what was presented to the Budget and Finance Committee and what we worked through over the course of the last four months. But with this new information, the revenue budget is now projected to be 98.3 million. That's an increase of 4.1 or 4.4% compared to this fiscal year. The one thing that I do want to point out is, we were originally projecting a decrease in state funding because of fewer students. And so the decrease was 136,000. So when you net those two together, the increase in the SAT minus the original decrease, it's really an increase compared to this current fiscal year, 2.1 million. So that's what you'll see is an increase in the revenue budget. The SAT adds 2.3 million, but we were expecting fewer students, which drops that increase compared to this year to 2.1 million. Make sense? Okay, so then looking at the projected revenues, again, 98.3 million, that's an increase of 4.1 million or 4.4%. Some of the significant increases, isn't, isn't all of them. These are just the significant ones. The top one is current taxes, 1 point, about 1.8 million. Most of that is from reassessments. And that's because of the CPI, we know is 2.9%. So we know that revenues, property revenues should increase by 2.9%. Assess values, preliminary assessed values, are about 20%. So what that means is, when it comes time to set the tax rates in September, our tax rates will have to drop so that we only collect a 2.9% increase in revenue. So, we know that potentially residential rate is going to drop about 45 cents. Commercial rate is going to be much larger. But again, it's, it's, it's working through the math to make sure that we only collect a permitted increase, which is the 2.9%. Some of the other increases include 526,000 from new construction. There's a decrease from the senior homestead tax credit. And then there's also a, a net decrease in the recruitment rates. So that's all factored into current taxes. Below that is the increase that I just talked about with state funding, 2.1 million. 355,000 in state transportation aid. 202,000 in early childhood special ed. And 134,000 in Prop C revenues. Some of the revenue decreases that we're expecting, the main ones, 298,000 in investment earnings. And, and that's because interest rates are dropping. We're currently collecting or have been collecting about 5.5%. It's closer to 4%. And really, that's what we're projecting for the next two years is 4%. So that's why that decrease is in there. And then 305,000 in federal funds. These are some decreases that we were expecting. There were some COVID funds that we received in the beginning of the year that were really for the prior fiscal year. There's lead testing funding that we received. So there's some one-time things that we received that we knew were going away. There's also some decreases just because the number of students that we're serving are going down. So like the free and reduced reimbursement, free and reduced meal reimbursements that we receive as some of those eligible students decline, those revenues go down as well. So looking at this graph, our local revenues make up about 85% of our revenue budget. And you see the main categories off to the right side, which are current delinquent taxes, Prop C, M and M SRT tax, investment earnings, and food service program revenues. State revenues are about 13%. Biggest one is the formula payment that we receive, but also early childhood special ed and transportation. We do receive some federal funding and county funding. The counting funding is state assessed railroad and utilities, that's the bulk of that. But both those federal and county relatively minor at about 1% each. Any questions about revenues before I move on to expenditures?
I, I have one real quick one. Does anyone else have one?
Okay.
The, the senior homestead property tax credit, that's the freeze that seniors can request?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
You'd prefer to split, Matt?
I don't mind. I'm fine with taking questions now if you'd like.
Let's get crazier. So, so my questions are around my ongoing education on the, the state adequacy target, right? That's right? Okay. So, I appreciate you, you giving us the, the history and the presentation of the, the impact. So it's a big variable, right? And in the way this gets presented. So, in the short term, does the way that we, you plan for where that SAT is ultimately going to come in? And I know we have a good friend in Jefferson City who's doing everything that he can, but he might not have enough pull yet. Will, will that, how we factor that, impact anything in terms of like, what we're planning to pay for this year?
No, because the expenditure budget was already set.
Okay.
And then we got news, really just a week ago.
Yeah.
And then I worked on revising the budget document itself by just adding that revenue. So only that revenue's, has been added only on the revenue side, no corresponding expenditures.
Because we started with it being flat, right? Okay. So I want to make that point, because again, I'll reiterate, we're in a very strong position. The way that we look at this is really more how we look at our long-term view. So, i- is it accurate to say, and again, this is from my own education, that we traditionally budget with the flat SAT? So, having faith that it's going to be fully funded would be in, is that a new kind of view in terms of how our budget gets put together?
We really take our guidance from DESI and what we hear from the state legislature. So DESI has, over the years, has projected what they thought the SAT would be or should be. And for example, a couple of years ago is when they put out these numbers, the 6760 for this year. And they were also projecting 7145 for next. We talked internally in with our Budget Finance Committee when we looked at long-term projections, knowing that that was a significant increase, jumping from 6760 up to 7145, that that was really significant, that we didn't want to put that in the projections just yet. But normally, we would. We would rely on what DESI is telling us, including that it's going to be fully funded.
Mr. Caffey, I, I do want to give a little bit more, I'm going to, I'm going to channel Chad Kavan a little more temperature and color to that. When that was passed, DESI made a recommendation a couple of years ago to do a two, a two-year stair step. And to increase the state adequacy target, which had not significantly increased for about 20 years, lagging very far behind inflation. And so, they made that recommendation, DESI did. And a year ago, the state legislature passed the increase that we have in this, the current fiscal year's budget, the 6760. But they also made a recommendation for the 7145. A year ago, a year ago, when that passed, there were state legislators that were saying, well, we'll pass it, but there's no way we're going to be able to fund it, that, the next increase. And so, I will tell you that when, when we were doing that and that passed a year ago, and, and Mike was factoring that in, Mike will remember this. I went into his, his office and I said, we're not putting a dime more than 6760 projecting anything forward until we figure out what the state legislature is going to do in 2025. Then Governor Quixote and his February State of the State address came out and said, we will not be beholden, in his recommendation for the budget, we will not be beholden to a year ago's legislature putting this $300 million increase in the budget. So that looked like the right thing to do. But lo and behold, working through the, the budget reconciliation process, I think, Steph, I'm using that term correctly, through that process, that what was, what was happened is there a compromise was reached and that money was, and that money was, was passed. I would have told you all the way up until about May 7th that that wasn't going to happen. And so, ultimately, yes, I do believe, we've not been given any reason to believe at this point that the governor won't sign that. But I will tell you that the result of that, the result of this and where we are now in terms of our expenditure budget, like the salaries of being set and things like that, that has been, what has been set based on that, what we had every reason to believe would be that flat 60, 6760. And so, ultimately, do we believe this will be, will be funded for the fiscal year '26? Yes, we do believe that. Have there been times in the past where the, where the state, because of the budget, has had to prorate? That's what they call it, the proration factor. I kid you not, in Colorado, it's called the budget stabilization factor. So yes, it is called the BS factor. And so, yes, if they don't have, if they can't fully fund it, then they just do, you know, like a, they give you 93 cents on the dollar or 96 cents on the dollar or something like that. But we have every reason to believe that that is the new floor for the state adequacy target. And that's what they'll be working for moving forward. There's not any time in the history that at least I, in my now of 30 years, where I, where the SAT has gone backwards. So it's, it's just raised the floor. Again, I forgot to make eye contact with Mike.
Yep. Yes, that's all correct.
So raising the floor, but also to the best of our knowledge, information we're taking in, but then fully funding it too? That, that's correct?
Yep.
So, that helps. Thank you. And what I'm hearing is that it, you know, this variable, it's good to look at that for long-term projections. It doesn't change anything that we were planning to do in terms of 25, 26, in terms of expenditures. But I think it's important, you know, forecasting is difficult. You want to go upon the best information that we have at the time. But, again, as we talk about what we just talked about, and then there'll be other things that we talk about. When we look at these operating fund projections, we're doing it with, with that in mind, that we feel like this is going to happen out of Jeff City. And that's something I think, just as a board and administration, we need to keep an eye on. I'm sure, certainly that we will. But that paints a pretty big part of the context of all of this in terms of how we evaluate what our resources are going forward. So, yeah, I think I'm good there. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So your projections are going to be based off the 67?
No, the 7,145 per student.
Okay. How often in the past have we had the, you know, the BS?
Proration.
Yeah.
It's, it's happened in the past 15, 20 years, probably five, six, seven times.
Okay.
Hasn't happened probably the last five years, I think.
Okay. But they've told us that they're going to do that, correct?
No, they haven't said that they were going to prorate it.
Well, but didn't the governor make an announcement that, yeah, we may pass it, but we won't fully fund it?
I have not heard that.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Could we? Yeah, I guess it makes me a little bit nervous. So let me just make sure that I understand that then with the projections, each year of those projections, those projections include funding it. funding it at the seven whatever number.
Yes.
And so it would be if it doesn't get funded and they don't raise it to the seven, it will change our projections significantly?
It, it would, depending on how much they reduce it by. So the, of course, the greater reduction, then yes, it's going to impact it. So the, it's something that we should look at each and every year.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm, you know, like they've never decreased it in your thirty years, but it's been the same for twenty years. So I think that.
Well, no, they've been, they've increased it.
Okay.
They've never decreased it.
Okay, in twenty years.
So what's not factored in over the next ten years is any more increases.
When was the last time that they increased this?
Well, this year, they increased it this year. But prior to that, I'd have to look back, but there was several years of increases, but they were relatively minor.
Right.
Less than a hundred dollars. And so they increased it about four-hundred dollars this year and almost another four-hundred for next year. So two significant increases back to back.
Okay, so I guess we're, you know, I know that you have always kind of been conservative in your projections. And so what is the budget and finance committee's thoughts on this?
Happened after we met.
I know.
So, so I sent the information to the budget and finance committee that it was signed into legislation, by the legislators and approved, and it's waiting on the governor's signature. So sent them that, you know, we fully expect that this is going to go through for next year. Who knows what will happen down the road, whether it would, you know, probably when it get cut, it probably would be prorated.
Right.
Because that number is based on how much schools spend throughout the state.
Okay.
And that generally doesn't ever go down.
Right, right, right.
So that, that's, SAT shouldn't decrease. If anything, the state would not fully fund it.
Which is essentially kind of decreasing it, right?
Yep, it would be, it would be a decrease. And it's ranged from as low as a couple percent to five or six percent.
Yeah, I just think it's important for all of us to kind of understand that because when you look at our, look at the budget, it's like, oh, okay, you know, this like, but there is a variable. And so I don't know if there's a way that you can give us that information to kind of show like the low end of what we could, what our projections would look like if this happened? Versus like what we would, what it would look like if this happened? Just because I think.
And we, we have those. That was presented to our budget and finance committee at our last meeting. It was, it was assuming that there was no increase in the SAT. And, and in that, that final year, thirty, two thousand thirty-three, thirty-four, the fund balance was projected to be right at about twenty-five, just below twenty-five percent. And so really, that's the difference between what was that, that number, that, you know, roughly, I think it was twenty-four-point-three percent compared to what is shown in this presentation and the budget document.
Okay.
So really, that's the impact of that SAT increase.
Yeah, I think that. Okay, so it goes to the twenty-four-point-three?
Yep, I believe that was the, the percentage.
Okay. And then, okay, that's all I've got for right now.
Ms. Hepburn?
Okay, so just without all the noise and all the details that most of my neighbors and people I talk to don't care about. If I can simplify this and just make sure I'm understanding the basics, which is that we get state funding. We have a range of numbers that it could be from zero to seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-five. We understand those variances when we're looking at projected budgets, but we're not counting on that money. We're not going to be screwed over if we don't get that money. We haven't allotted it to some sort of expense, correct?
Yes and no. We counted on the sixty-seven, sixty. What we're not counting on is, what we weren't accounting on just a couple of weeks ago, was the increase, right, right.
All right, but our confidence in the sixty-seven, sixty is really high because that's a continuation of something that was already kind of established.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Neiman?
Yeah, thanks. I think I was going to underscore, Ms. Hepburn, the clarification that I think you put forward, which is, what I heard you say is the operating expenses, we're not changing in reliance on getting that increased amount. We based what we're going to spend on the reduced amount. So anything we get above that is just extra money that we have. And, and I don't want the state legislator to hear me to be like, oh, wait, they don't need the money. But it's more, that's what it is. So we're, even when our projections are either high or they're higher than they were previously, right? So there's, we're not counting on money that we may or may not get.
Right.
Is that true? Okay.
Right, we didn't have any associated expenditures added when we got that news.
Right, got it. Thank you.
Go on.
Okay, so the projected expenditures are ninety-three-point-six million in our operating fund. That's an increase of two-point-three million or two-point-five-five percent. Again, I listed some of the more significant increases and significant decreases. Most of the expenditure budget, eighty percent, is salaries and benefits. And so the very first increase is the increase in salary and benefit packages, which were about two-point-four million dollars, the average package increase. And that's wage increase plus benefit increases was three-point-two-seven percent. The next line, you see two-point-two million for KHS roof and exterior lighting. That's something that the board approved back in December. With that is we have some allocated funds of one-point-two million dollars. That's, that's really to use, that provides some flexibility for the board, but also for the new superintendent coming in. So that's money that is, it's in there as a line item, but we haven't determined how it's going to be used yet. So that's where the flexibility comes in. Whether the board wants to use it for facilities or staffing or programs, whatever it's, you, you have that flexibility. So it's, it's in there, just hasn't been determined exactly how it's going to be used. The next is an increase in textbooks and math resources. Below that is an increase in teaching contingency of three-point-oh. That, that is something that originally I wasn't planning to add, but I know that there were some concerns about not having that and some history on the teaching contingency. We used to have that each and every year as our enrollment was growing. So we added a teaching contingency into the budget because we wouldn't truly know what our enrollment was going to be or class sizes would be until we got later into the summer. So we added that as a contingency at this point in time, just in case we had to add teachers. So it was, originally wasn't going to be put in because our enrollment had decreased and is projected to decrease again. So that's why it, it wasn't originally planned, but it has since been added back in. As you heard Dr. Field say, that we potentially can reduce through attrition five more teachers. So that gives some additional flexibility for the board. And that, if you recall, Dr. Ulrich said about the glide path that we would be on as, as enrollment goes down, we have to look at potentially reducing expenditures. We should, just be fiscally responsible. We are projected to lose about four-hundred elementary students over the next five years. So I know that what I said was plan on at least nine teachers. That was a pretty conservative. We should easily be able to reduce nine teachers through attrition if we lose four-hundred elementary students. So that's, and it's not planned for next year, it's planned for year two, three, and four going out. But if we do end up reducing staff by five this summer, then we're really halfway there already. So the other thing that I, I do want to point out is there's, there's some savings each and every year from people that leave the district, leave for whatever reason, whether they move out of, out of the area. We had one teacher that decided to retire kind of last minute, that wasn't part of their original ESIP. And we'll save about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars just from their replacements, those seven teacher replacements. So that's some more flexibility that, that we would have within the budget. Some significant decreases. This current fiscal year that we're in, we paid the final principal and interest amounts due on the prop buy bonds, which were two-point-six million dollars. So that, that came out of the operating fund this year. No longer needed next year, so that's a decrease. We reduced PLC coaching, literacy link, and math three-one-four. We reduced some just because it wasn't needed anymore. That's four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand. And then there's some one-time expenditures that we reduced as well. The renovations that we did on KCC. There was a one-time school furniture allocation that was approved in this year's budget. That's not in next year. And then we also bought some maintenance vehicles. So looking at the overall budget, you see again, eighty percent is salaries and benefits. Services are about eleven percent of the budget. That includes things like bus transportation, property insurance, school food service. Supplies are six percent. Probably the biggest one is our electric and gas. Those are considered supplies for the district. But also textbooks, custodial supplies, maintenance, copy center supplies. There's a number of different supplies that we pay for. The last thing is equipment and other two-point-seven million or three percent. That includes the KHS roof, exterior lighting that I mentioned for one million. The one-point-two million that's unallocated, had to put it somewhere. So it's, it's in this category. But again, that's something that the board, a new superintendent, will be able to use during the year if and when the need arises. This graph shows the same total expenditures, it's just broken out a little differently. You see that we spend, the budget is made up of fifty-five percent of it is for teaching staff, eighteen percent is for support staff, and seven percent is for admin. And then everything else, supplies, services, equipment, that's twenty percent of the budget. We always look at how much we spend per pupil. We compare ourselves to other districts just to see where we compare, to see if we're kind of staying on track. This is from the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. We won't know this current fiscal year for a few months, once all school districts start reporting that. But this time a year ago, we spent fourteen-thousand-six-hundred per student. That's close to the county average. It has been for a number of years. County average is fourteen-point, fourteen-thousand-four-hundred. So pretty close to the county average. You see a couple of districts below us, a couple neighboring districts below us, and a couple that are above us. But this doesn't change a whole lot. We, we generally have been kind of right in the middle of the pack for the last several years. Okay, time to switch to the fund balance. Any questions on expenditures before I move on?
Mr. Caffey? Switch it up. Ms. Neiman. Ms. Hepburn?
I'll just channel Mr. Boyko for a second and say that for our expenditure per student, we get amazing outcomes when you look at us, how we compare. And that's a point that Mr. Boyko used to make all the time and it's something I really appreciate and something that comes up in conversation with a lot. So I'm just going to point it out.
Ms. Andrews?
So when a, in the budget, you have line items, right? And so when a line item, when you go over the budget in, on a line item, I know that we have budget amendments and that type of thing. What is the mechanism to inform the board of this?
It's the monthly budget amendment report that is submitted to the board.
Okay. Is there a way to make a, a adjustment to how that's being reported to us? In a way that, so that it can be something that if, if there is significant overage, we're not ha, like not having to kind of like, you know, look at this document compared to this document, compared to this document? Just because as a board member, I, I think that it's important for us to be aware when, you know, I know that we get the, the monthly thing, but I, I think that we, there has to be other steps taken.
Yeah, we can put it in the memo that goes along with it. Usually it's pretty brief, but that probably would be the spot where we would, if there's some significant changes, to list some of those and the reasons why. I think, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because I guess, you know, if the, you know, the amendments don't ha, you know, I would have to go look at the line item to see what the budget is, to see then like, are we out of, but you know, are we out of our budgeted line item? And so.
I, I completely understand what you're getting at and I think that might be something really good to talk to Dr. Rumpus and the new CFO about.
Absolutely, but I just want to, I want to make sure that, because obviously you're going to be talking to Dr. Cook and not, I'm not going, you know, to be. So if you can just put that in.
I can, and, and the, the other thing that I wanted to mention, the financial statements that we give monthly. There's, over on the right side, there's, there's a column that says adopted budget and a column that says amended budget. And if you, as you look through those and if you see any differences, that's one way of knowing what the increase was from the time that we set the budget a year ago.
Okay, so, okay. That's in the budget amendment?
Yeah, there's, the column says adopted budget and then the sec, the column next to it says amended budget.
Okay, perfect, okay. Thank you. Ms. Rumi?
I think it might have been this time last year where we were talking about just like us being self-insured and, I mean, every industry and company is expen, experiencing increases in medical expenditures. So any, I'm just curious, any update if there's a, I don't think anybody's experienced a difference in that trend, but I'm assuming we're continuing to experience that.
Yeah, we, it, it's something that we continue to watch. You know, the medical claims have really gone up quite a bit. There's a variety of reasons for that. One is just inflation, but also is just some unfortunate incidents with some employees. So it is something that we watch. We, we've looked at what other school districts are experiencing too. And, and ours has been consistent and in some cases lower than what some school districts are experiencing. The premium amount that some of our neighboring districts, we, for the longest time, we were well under what the other school districts were using as a premium, either paying or putting into their self-funded account. So that is something we should continue to look at. You know, whether or not we decide to stop being self-funded versus traditional type of insurance, that certainly would be a bigger conversation and some type of study to kind of figure out that. But we, we were in a very good posi, position for a number of years where our claims were just really low and we didn't increase the premium for six or seven years. That all really changed, I, I think with the onset of COVID, really impacted everything, obviously. But, and it, and then with inflation, it just really hasn't stopped. So we've been trying to get on top of it by increasing the premiums each and every year, and we have. And hopefully that, we've kind of turned the tide on that. And I, I just mentioned we had two good months. And so it's only two, but hopefully that's the trend that we can expect going forward.
Do we need to just make note of that as something that needs to probably be studied? Just to, again, doesn't sound like we've got any critical issues here, but just to be ahead of it?
Probably should.
Okay.
Yep. At the very least, compare ourselves to what some of our neighboring districts. And I don't know when the last time that was done. I think HR does it pretty frequently when, when we look at premiums. But that would be kind of a quick and easy, give us a, a quick and easy idea of, of how we compare in terms of premiums and expense when compared to our neighboring districts.
I do remember that Ms. Ross had done some work.
A clinic.
Clinic type thing. And there are a variety of districts that do that, so.
In addition to the medical costs, I think it might be helpful to take a similar process, like kind of approach of thinking and projecting to other expenses that might rise outside of our control. So for example, I noted a nearly $240,000 increase in what was needed to upkeep some of our buildings. And so I think we obviously see different industries up and flow. So if we can keep our finger on the pulse of what those industries are, to be able to anticipate those rising costs.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, so looking at our operating fund balance, there's really, the purpose of the fund balance is, you know, there's a short-term purpose and a long-term purpose. This illustrates the short-term purpose really, and that is, we have to wait until December, January to receive most of our revenue. So we use the fund balance to get us through the first five months of the fiscal year while we wait for those revenues to come in. So that's why you see that dip in the fund balance in the first five years goes up, or first five months, goes up the next couple of months, and then it starts to come down again. That's something that we experience each and every year. November is always the low point in our fund balance. So long-term purpose, you see there, it provides mainly financial stability with, for us to be able to weather different types of unforeseen, you know, problems that may arise or cuts that may come along. So it prevents us from having to lay off staff, cut programs, things like that.
Ms. Romey, forgive me for interrupting, but Ms. Andrews, that would be exactly what he's talking about, would be exactly, let's say we had a year where they had to do the proration factor at like a .96. This would, this is weathering the storm. That would be an example of really trying to anticipate the impact, yeah. So that would be an example, just thinking about your conversation earlier.
Yep. Any year that we get word that something's going to change, it would affect those, this graph. Some of the significant assumptions that I've listed, we're assuming a 2.9% increase in property tax revenue next year. Assessments happen each or every other year in odd years. And these assumptions are, we always talk about these with our budget and finance committee. These are our major revenue assumptions that we have. But in those subsequent reassessment years, we're only projecting a 1.8% increase. So a lot of the projections are somewhat conservative, and that's kind of an example of one, is that we're assuming a pretty low increase in those reassessment years. And again, it's tied to CPI. So we expect property assessments to be higher, and probably much higher, but we only get the increase of the CPI increase, and that number is 1.8% that's in the projections. Assumes proxy revenues are stable, assumes the 7,145 per student in SAT. Again, it doesn't assume it increases any further from that over the next 10 years. It likely will increase some. There could be some years where there's a proration as well. But it does assume that full amount and that it's fully funded. Investment earnings used to not be a significant source of revenue for us. There was a time when interest rates, those COVID years where it was next to zero. But it now, because we're earning 5% on our investments, it's $2 million a year, so it's pretty significant. It does assume 4% over the next two years. We got some money that's already invested for the next two years, earning higher than 4%. So 4% over the next two years, 2% each subsequent year after. That's also something that our budget and finance committee recommended. Salary and benefit packages, a net increase of 2.75%. That doesn't mean wages can't be, increases can't be higher. That's increase in the package after retirement and other reductions that we know will happen. And then you see the last line there, 203334, the projection is 48.9 million or 43.1%. So really strong financially. I do feel that these are somewhat conservative. It'll probably be extended, probably be higher than that at that point. But there's still a lot, a number of things that can impact this.
So with regards to that, what you just said about the two points, the package at 2.7, can you repeat that about the retirement savings?
So every year we, there's turnover, we lose staff, so...
So we have a savings from that.
That is really kind of the net increase in salaries and benefits that we're projecting. So...
So you're using that savings from retirement to pay the increase in staff, or increase in...
Yeah, I'm just looking at the overall salary and benefit budget. So we may get, we may give a 3.5% or 4% increase. We have savings from retirees. The net impact is a 2.75% increase.
Okay. Just because I know that Dr. Ulrich and I, we have had conversations and different things about, you know, that money, and sometimes we've talked about how, you know, sometimes that money, could we use it for, like, if there's a need for student needs? And so that's just something that I want to make sure we are meeting our staff needs, but also meeting our students' needs, so.
Okay. Okay, so I'll try to go quickly on debt service. These projections are based on the preliminary property assessments that we just got in March, which I had mentioned was about a 20% increase. When determining debt service revenues and the debt service tax rate, it's not tied to CPI. So we're not capped at the 2.9% for debt service. Debt service is based on what you, the debt that you have to pay. So assessments, property assessments, and the debt that you owe is how you determine what the revenues can be. And we're permitted to carry an ending fund balance equal to the next year debt payment. And so next year, the projected, projection is, and this is based on these preliminary assessments, they will change. They'll go down some in July. They'll go down even further when we get the final numbers in September, but we're still going to see a significant increase in debt service revenues. But based on the information we have at this time, revenues will go up 1.2 million. And then our fund balance, that impacts the fund balance. It goes from 3.5 to 4.8 million. And then next year, assuming that assessments don't drop, and they shouldn't drop in the following year, then the ending fund balance in that second column of numbers rises to $6 million. So at that point in time, the fund balance is higher than the next year's debt payment. And so that's when we're going to be at a point where we have to reduce the tax levy. And you see at the third column at the top, I hope you can see that, right, right here, right there. Projected to go down to 22 cents. So the new administration, the Board of Education, two years, you'll have a decision to make, either allow it to drop, it'll be forced to drop if we don't pay off debt early. And we do have a history of paying off debt early. We've done it three or four times in the past five or six years. So if we pay off debt early, then the tax levy can stay at 27 cents. That would be my recommendation, but that's not for me to decide. But there's some advantages, there's some advantages to keeping it at 27 cents, but to pay off debt early. You save the interest cost, and you would likely pay off the final year of Prop R debt, or a portion of it. We're paying 4.3% interest on that debt, so that will be a choice for the board to make. Like I said, we've done it in the past. There's a note there that they're not callable, but you can defees debt. All that means is you put money with an escrow agent, a bank, they hold the money and pay off the bonds when they're callable. But that allows you to get it off your books, and then you maintain that debt service levy, and you don't have to pay the interest on those bonds in the final year of Prop R.
Mr. Caffey.
As always, thank you. So my question comes back to the revenue that we created with the tax rate in September, and the use of that, the decision for the use of that when we pivoted based on feedback to add the three contingency teachers back in. And I want to preface my questions and comments based on the fact that this is like a process focus to me. I'm trying to understand, so we created about 2.5 million in additional revenue in September. You came to us in December, and we chose as a board to use a million of that. Another decision has been made to use 250,000 of it in the budget to bake back in the contingency teachers, and that's where I'm struggling. I am not aware that we've discussed that. I know we discussed, you know, we asked some questions at the preliminary staffing discussion about that. There were ongoing discussions, and I believe we felt that it's good to have that, to aid the new superintendent, just in kind of an ease of operations, right? But how we choose to fund it was not discussed by this board. And my concern with this is, again, I don't think it's a dollar amount. I mean, money's money, don't get me wrong, but it's not going to cripple the district. But I worry about a precedent being set that a decision on the use of that money can be made without this board discussing it. And then another 250,000 is used, and another 250 after that, and then we're looking at, where did that go? And we've ventured away from the original intent of creating those funds so that we can make decisions to proactively get ahead of the facility master plan work, or do other things that might be identified by the administration. So I want to open up that conversation to make sure, because that conversation did not happen like it did in December when we approved that. So first, I want to, why did we, how did we get here?
I think the decision was made just because right around that time, also, we got the enrollment report, and, you know, it, not only did we decrease enrollment this year, and really last year as well, we've experienced two years of decrease, and the enrollment report shows that significant decreases are coming over the next five years. And so, you know, the fact that we probably didn't need the contingency, but we knew that there was a concern about not having that allocated. So I think the concern was, didn't really feel like it was a need to increase the overall budget, because there was enough of contingency funds really built into the budget. There's really a total of 1.5 million in contingency. It's the 255,000 for teaching contingencies, the additional 1.2 million that's unallocated, and then really on top of that, potentially another five FTE staffing that we think we won't need. We won't know until later this summer. But that's an additional five staff, funds for additional five staff that's built into the budget that won't be needed or may not be needed. And so I think that's really the, I think the purpose was really just not to inflate the budget too much.
But again, I think the contingency topic, it illustrates to me a process piece, and I just don't know, I struggle to understand why we've been so averse to having this discussion about it. And I think we need to have it. I think the original intent in creating those funds, you guys did great work, we spent weeks and weeks and weeks trying to get caught up with you, and I think we did, to do good things. And now we're diverting away to where, you know, that conversation's not including the board, and I struggle with that. So I want to have the conversation. I want to make sure that, I mean, do we all agree that we should have a voice in that? So what does that look like? I think that the feedback was received that we, as a board, wanted to ease the new superintendent, that if he's got difficult timing, you know, decisions to be made about adding teachers at the last minute, that we can do it within the structure of the current budget. But tapping into those funds, I'm repeating myself at this point, so you know where I stand and what I'm asking for. So Ms. Motique, I turn to you. Dr. Ulrich, I turn to you. This is something I have been asking for, that we need to discuss this now.
Well, and I think the one thing I want to make sure that I say is that at no point have I, have I or Mr. Romey or any members of my staff been averse to the conversation.
I disagree.
This is, this is a recommendation, and I believe the recommendation is based on sound fiscal background and planning. However, what I will say is, is if that, if the Board of Education would like that to be indicated in a different part of the budget, or differently in the budget, certainly that is, we will take direction from that based on, based on the conversation. So I want to make sure that what is not coming across is somehow an aversion to the conversation or otherwise even being defiant. What I believe is, and what I have supported is, certainly the original recommendation back in December when we first started these conversations, all the way and leading up to and supporting Mr. Romey's recommendation as he has brought it forward this evening. But again, if after a conversation, the board says, nope, Dr. Ulrich, we would like that charged to the budget, above and outside of the funds that were generated by the increase in tax revenue, by the choices that the board made in September, then certainly that's how we'll reflect it.
I've asked on at least four occasions, and the feedback that I've been given has been that if this wants to be discussed, it needs to be discussed in July with the new superintendent. So I want to be clear, that has been communicated to me multiple times. So that's why I'm bringing this here, because I don't understand why that was the guidance, and why that was communicated to us. We're here working through this and putting our time and effort into figuring out this budget now, and this is a component of it. So I'll lead here. Like, are we even in position with five board members here this evening to process through this? I don't want to speak for everybody, and Ms. Motique, you tell me to stop, but I believe the board wants a voice here. And again, more important to me is establishing a process for how we go about utilizing those funds that were created in September. So what I'll put on the floor is, we have two board members that aren't here. Everybody's voice needs to be accounted for in this conversation. You know where I stand, but everybody deserves an opportunity to speak here. We need to come up with a way to do this, so that I think from a timing perspective, to respect the process, we can get feedback to Dr. Ulrich and Mr. Romey about how this needs to be potentially changed as we come back to the work session in early June.
I have also asked on repeated occasions and was told that this was, you know, Dr. Rumpus's budget, but this is your budget, Dr. Ulrich, with Dr. Rumpus implementing it. And so one of the things that I asked and was told that I wouldn't get unless I got complete board approval was, I would like to see the projections with the contingency teachers, not using the, I call it the tax rollback money. Does that make sense?
Not entirely.
Okay. It's okay.
And I'm trying to wrap myself, my head around it. I've talked to Mr. Caffey a bunch. Here's, and I didn't mean to jump in. We wanted, we essentially directed them to put the contingency teachers back in the budget. Because we were concerned... because we were concerned that they were removed. They're back in the budget. What, what fund, or where should they have been?
Okay. So what I, um, you know, the two point, is it 2.5 million from the rollback?
It's 3 million, but.
Okay, 3 million, but we, we.
We marked 2.5 million.
Yeah, so the 2.5 million, right? When we all decided to roll that back, we also decided that that would be money that we discussed, right? So we voted on the, um, so I would like the contingency teachers not to be paid for with that 2.5. I would like them to be paid for within our budget. Again, one, a processing thing. Two, that was what, because we haven't agreed upon it as a board, then, then that's where I think it, it should have been paid for, unless it, it is talked about it as a board.
I, I can, to reframe that, and Ms. Romei, I think you know where I'm going. I, I think we'd like to see the, the budget presented with the 1.5 still unencumbered. And not 1.25.
I do. So speaking to that point, I was trying to wait my turn. I'm doing my own little part to keep us in order here, you know? You know, I, I do agree. I, I think the points being made are that when we voted on doing that rollback, we talked about a lot of different things that we could use that money for. And I, I think that the assumption was, I think the fair assumption and probably the discussion that we had was, you know, it's possibilities, and we as a board will agree down the line, whether it's facilities improvements coming out of the master plan or any number of things. And so I think Mr. Caffey's very fair concern here is that if we just start, like, putting it towards little things that we don't discuss, that pretty soon we, we could, you know? I, I think that's fair. I, what I'm hearing is that we had kind of a budget set up and that we asked for the contingency teachers. And the thought was, there's probably a lot of places where funding for those contingency teachers may come from, but it's not official yet because it's going to be losing teachers through attrition. It's going to be these other possible things. We may not need the contingency teachers. And so I, I get that thought process, that it was kind of used as a placeholder that was unlikely to be used. But that doesn't change the fact that it wasn't, hey, the board set aside this chunk of money, and the board wants to decide what to do with it, and that that decision was made without us having a conversation about it. And so I, I think just going forward, if we're aware that that's not what we're hoping to do with that money, it'd be nice to have a more formalized process of whether, and it could come from either side. It could be we as a board are saying, hey, we've all, we're really into this thing, can we use this money for that? Or it could be you guys coming to us and saying, hey, you know, a tornado demolished something, and we need to do, you know, we need money for some, whatever it is. You know, I, I think, um, the conversations should probably be had is, is the fair point, I'd say. So that was me speaking to that piece, and then I just wanted, the thing I was going to say originally was just as you are in your, probably, you know, on your way out the door, happy to start a fresh life without looking at numbers and seeing them in your sleep. I just want to say that as we go through these presentations, some things that I really appreciate about you and your work and the strategies that you apply, I, I love that you take the conservative stance on things. I think that leaves us so much room, and I think it puts us in a good position constantly, that you use conservative numbers and make sure we're erring on that side of things. And then, you know, your advice to pay off the debt. I mean, I, I'm married to a financial advisor, so I just, I, you're like, I'm right there with you, and I, I appreciate that. I think that that kind of strategy and that philosophy with managing our finances has led to us being in such a good position. And so I just wanted to share my appreciation with you on, on that front.
Thank you.
Before I call on Ms. Neiman and anyone else, we need to, we need a motion to extend the meeting. We're at 8:26. In four minutes, we would have to disperse. So I need a motion to extend the meeting.
So move, Caffey.
Second, Neiman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need Chad here to vote no. We're about to get some really bad weather, so we probably want to wrap this up as quickly as we can. Okay? Ms. Neiman?
No further comments. Well, that helps.
I, I will just say that I too appreciate your conservative approach. I don't use conservative as a positive very often. And I also always, if you see me chuckling whenever you're talking about a fund amount, I always think you're saying fun, not fund. And I would ask, is, um, as a board, if we could have conversations and plan to come back at the work session to address some of these concerns when everyone can be here? Does that sound like a plan?
Note, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, but there's no direction until we come back to the work session in June.
In the meantime, I, I think what I heard from the board is to run the projections with the, run the projections with the teachers outside of that. Is that what I heard as well, Ms. Motique? Okay, you'll have that, uh, we can have that for you maybe even as soon as, certainly by the end of the week, maybe even as early as tomorrow.
And to clarify, I'm adding three contingencies, keeping the 1.5 million intact, and not reducing the FTE that Dr. Fields just talked about. We're not taking those five teachers out.
You, you, you are, you are correct in your deduction.
All right.
Future events, 10.01, last day of school, early release is this Thursday. And then there is, uh, ice cream, meet the new superintendent up at the park from 1:30 to 3:30. And I think we can adjourn.
Thank you.